We call this board meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on August the 20th at 5:30 PM. Please join us as we recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. We call this board meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on August 20th, 24 and at 5:30 PM. Oh, I just see this about Mr. Kinley. I didn't see it on the first page.
That was from last year.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, moving on. We've got the meeting goals and agenda.
Thank you for joining us tonight at Foster Heights Elementary School. As we kick off our school year, we'll be learning about the amazing work going on at Foster Heights and hearing from their team here shortly. We'll also be connecting with the arts education programs from across Nelson County, hearing more about their work this summer and the vision for the year ahead. And finally, we'll be doing amongst a number of things, evaluating facility, planning next steps, and timeline.
All right. I think that, yes.
Madam Chairman, I want to amend our agenda for tonight, please.
Okay.
With that being said, I want to amend section seven, letter A, please.
Okay. And you're referring to the constitutional amendment portion. And what is the, could you state the reason you'd like to remove that?
I want to eliminate that for this evening because of the Attorney General's statement that said that we needed to be very careful what was spoken about on campus on a school property. And I don't think it'll do us any good to say, since there is not any representative to say both, to leverage both sides of the issue. And we can't do that as a board members in this board meeting. We're not to do that. So if you care for a vote, I'd be more than happy to.
Well, before we go to a vote, I think it, since I'm the one that requested that be on the agenda, the Attorney General has stated that we can't say as a board how we stand.
Oh.
But we can inform our community about Amendment Two. And I think it would be irresponsible as public school board members to not be obligated to inform our community about Amendment Two. It impacts education.
Well, it certainly does. My read of the opinion would just be that it was an advisory opinion and Mr. Coleman states that we must not use school time and money to advocate for or against the amendment. I feel like it would be difficult because this is, has a big impact on schools. I think it would be very difficult to even discuss it without it being somewhat biased. So I kind of agree that maybe this is one that we can express views outside of our role as sitting here today. I think it's a little.
Again, this isn't about taking a stance. This is about sharing the language of the amendment with our community. I think this again is irresponsible of this board to be a member of a public school board and not share with their community what this amendment reads and how they should be looking at that amendment. Again, this is not about this board taking a stance for or against this amendment. This is about sharing information so that we have well-informed voters going to their ballot and making an informed decision. Again, this is not about taking a stance. This is about sharing information.
And it sounds like I have a motion on the floor to remove it as an agenda item.
In the context of the board, if a board member adds an item to the agenda only to be removed from the agenda, I mean, it feels a little bit like censorship.
It absolutely is censorship. And since we don't have a board attorney sitting here to actually take part of this, we're left to our own device to actually make this decision. And again, I can only reiterate to our community to make you all understand and to have you all understand, this was a discussion portion of our agenda that was going to share what Amendment Two is that will be on the ballot on November 5th. This was not for this board to take a stance. This was for this board to have a moment to share with their community an amendment that affects education. And since it sounds like that's probably not going to happen tonight, please email us as a board. I am happy to have this discussion after the meeting. If anyone wants to stand around and listen to look at the amendment, I have plenty of copies. Well, not plenty because if everyone stays, but I have some information to share with you all that is basically the language of this amendment.
You can't have a discussion on the language on the amendment unless you give both sides.
You absolutely can.
Unless you give both sides yes and no. If that's what I'm afraid, we don't need to take a chance.
There's already, there's already.
We cannot take a chance on being hung again on like Plaski County or anybody else without knowing.
Can a school board.
Excuse me, without sharing even these points. We're not capable of doing that. We don't have anybody here to speak either or or against. That's what I'm trying to tell you. If you had like we had at KSBA, yes, I'd say you just go for it. But we don't have that person. You're not capable of doing it. I'm not capable of doing it. You have to give both sides. If you're going to discuss it, you have to give both sides. You cannot just hand them a piece of paper and say, here you go. Here's the amendment.
Well, it's my understanding that if these views are expressed outside of school time.
Yes.
I think that, and I think it's good information. I just don't believe that we can do it from this.
Again, this was not to share.
I don't think it's the best time to do this during this meeting.
Was not to share a stance. This was to share the language of Amendment Two. Can a school board put Amendment Two on the board meeting agenda for discussion? Coming from Kentucky School Board Association. Absolutely. Like any other discussion item, communications, report, or update, boards can take the opportunity to discuss the amendment. Perhaps your board has a legislative issues liaison, which we do not. Maybe your board has a reoccurring agenda item for community news and announcements. We do not. While these might be natural places to include the decision or the discussion of Amendment Two, you can include the item however you wish, speak with your central office, which I did, and best include it on the agenda. By raising this issue at a public meeting, you provide your community an opportunity to better understand a topic which they may otherwise may have little knowledge, a topic with major consequences for all Kentuckians and their local public schools.
And how many people do you? And how many people here in this room hasn't already heard, seen television, radio, XM, I don't care where it is, have not heard about this amendment?
We have a lot of people out in the room. Just with a show our hands. How many people know about Amendment Two on the ballot this November? How many do not know about the ballot amendment?
And how many are you or under 20 or 25?
Well, here's the thing.
Because the younger you are, if it's like anybody else, you don't pay attention.
Okay.
You don't pay attention.
We're going to belabor this. So Ms. Bowling requested it be on the agenda. I hear Ms. Berry has a motion to strike it from the agenda. I think we just need to take action on that and move on. So there's a motion to eliminate it from the agenda. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. All in favor of removing from the agenda, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. So the motion passes. So we're going to eliminate any discussion for legality purposes of this constitutional amendment. Okay.
Again, I welcome anyone to stay after and we can talk.
All right. So now moving on to agenda item three, the top 10 and pride awards. Superintendent Bradley?
So we're going to do this a little bit differently tonight. We have a member from the school that's just going to shout out the team member. And I will, as a team members come up, I will shout out and get this started with Ms. Grace Berrios, who I believe is not here. She's not here. But we'll celebrate Grace and the team. So we are going to celebrate Ms. Grace Berrios. If you, for those of you that have worked with Grace and our family communications team, she and Mariah are a dynamic duo. Ms. Grace is truly amazing Grace. She can get things done that few people can in a matter of minutes. And she came to us just a couple of years ago and she's been an amazing addition to the Nelson County schools. She makes magic happen every day. Thank you to Ms. Grace Berrios.
So Grace won the Reimagine Possibilities Award. And I'm going to go now to Sean Smith to talk about the Put People First Award and a winner from his school, Ms. Randy Jury.
Good evening. Yeah, I just want to celebrate Randy Jury. She is a, when I think of Nelson County, I think some of our pride values at Old Kentucky Home Middle School, we have the lead value. She embodies those values so well. She's an anchor in our school community and she does just what her award is, putting people first on a regular basis, most importantly, her students. She'll go out of her way, take time, and sacrifice her time for her kids. And she's in such an important role in seventh grade ELA. So we love Ms. Jury at OKH and her kids absolutely adore her as well. So just a big shout out to Ms. Jury at OKH.
And Mr. Kurt Maryfield is here to talk about the Innovate and Grow Award recipient, which is Ms. Haley Boggs from Thomas Nelson High.
So I just want to celebrate the work Ms. Boggs has done. This is her third year at Thomas Nelson High School in our science department. For the past two years, she's been our next gen design team design leader. So she has led the science PLC as they have worked to collaborate and integrate all of those different engineering and science principles into our school building. She's also a, just a culture guru. She's got great connections with all of the kids that she leads. And we're just extremely happy to have her leading. She's actually part of the advanced Kentucky cohort that's come through here. So a lot of professional development. So when I think about innovating and growing and thinking anew about education, I can't think of anyone better to get this award than Ms. Boggs.
And the Dedicated to Our Community Award was awarded to Ms. Holly Pickerty of the Nelson County Early and Art Center. Ms. Pickerty, can you come up and join us for a moment?
So tonight I want to celebrate Ms. Holly Pickerty. I kind of tricked her into coming tonight. But she was receiving the Dedicated to Community Award and this is her dedication. I said, hey, I really need your help at this board meeting tonight. And she was on it in a minute. We started school on Monday and she has been working her tail off. For those of you that don't know, her role is a business leader at ELC. She doesn't only support our preschoolers at ELC. She supports district-wide childcare as well. So I think her texts start going off in the morning about 5:00 AM. Sometimes they're from me, sometimes they're from childcare. But she is ready and dedicated to our community. She's worked really hard this summer, helped setting up new systems that allows our community to connect with each other. So we're just very grateful for the work that Ms. Holly has done at the ELC and district-wide and childcare.
And the Energize the World Award was given to David Sparrow of Nelson County High School. And Ms. Jessica Sikolsky is here to speak about Mr. Sparrow.
So David Sparrow has been a part of this Nelson County community for many, many years. He is a graduate of Nelson County High School. He has taught at Nelson County High School given his entire career. He went from a social studies teacher into the backpack role two years ago. This year, he has joined us as our assistant principal at Nelson County High School as well. When I think about somebody that can go into a room, energize gym full of students, energize a room full of teachers to give their ultimate best in what they're doing, David Sparrow is definitely the one that comes to mind. He is continuing to lead teachers in our building and across the district and everything that he does. And if you've ever got to talk to David and he's not here for me to pick on him, I'm going to anyway, you know that you better settle in for a minute because he's a man of a lot of words. But he's a fantastic leader and we're lucky to have him to continue his lifelong career at Nelson County High School.
So can I just get you all one more time to give a big round of applause to all of these August Pride Award winners?
And I'll finish up here with the impossible top 10. These are, these are big achievements as we look past the last two months. Over 150 teachers engaged in summer leadership pathways across Nelson County. We'll be hearing from some of those shortly with our arts team. We have 721 middle schoolers right now engaging in the new college and career connect experiences across our two middle schools. 300 students are currently placed in work-based learning programs where they're uniting with people and places across Nelson County. 580 students are currently enrolled in dual-credit courses for the fall semester. 50 elementary teachers are working towards excellence in literacy, micro credentialing this year. All of our elementary schools are using the EL reading curriculum this year to continue to build active learning, character growth, and teamwork. In the same way, elementary teachers are using a program taught illustrative math, which has been used at Foster Heights here for the last couple of years. And it's a high-quality, challenge-based curriculum resource that you'll be hearing more about throughout the course of this year. NCHS started four new houses and teachers are leading that process as we connect students to students and teachers to teachers. Every campus this summer engaged in first responder walkthroughs to evaluate and build school safety plans with administrators. And finally, 3,200 families participated in one-on-one meetings with Care and Connect and homeroom leaders over the past two weeks. A lot to celebrate in Nelson County and we've had a great start to our school year.
Let me ask something. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. West, how many, what's our enrollment?
You know, there's certain measures I look at each morning and usually our enrollment's not one of them. I couldn't tell you exactly our enrollment, but Mr. Alex Martin may be able to. Alex?
Alex, what's our enrollment, please? I went to school, I normally go for the past 12 years with the exception of the COVID. And I went to each school and I asked that very question. So do you have sort of a roundabout idea, how many kids?
K-12, they have around 4,000 students. And then preschool, about 200 or 240 students.
Are you talking about ADA or total enrollment, Alex?
Total enrollment.
Okay.
Okay. Because when I went to Foster Heights, I'm sorry, not Foster Heights, New Haven, she didn't include, like Tiffany was waiting on, I think the little smallest because they weren't going to start that day. So she couldn't give me a roundabout, but I was impressed. I asked questions. I, you know, I walked around with the principal, asked some questions. And it seemed like, especially at Old Kentucky Home and Boston and New Haven, that they really appreciated the move. It cleared out some, you know, I told them they felt like they could breathe some and had empty spaces, not a lot, but they had it. So I just thought maybe, you know, I could get a sort of a round number. I know the 10 days aren't up yet, but I'm glad. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. So Mr. Hill, we have Foster Heights Elementary Student Celebration.
Good evening. Thanks for letting us come and share a little bit about Foster Heights. It's a unique time with five days into the school year to really have a lot of student data from this school year. So for tonight, we're going to share some accomplishments from last school year and kind of outline our priorities for this upcoming year that you'll learn more about throughout the course of the year. First and foremost, I want to shout out some people that did extraordinary work to make this start to the school year very smooth. One of those being our bus drivers. We had road construction going on out here that was an extra hurdle we weren't anticipating. And we have some of the best bus drivers around and they really worked hard in the transportation department to make sure everything was really seamless. And that's a big stressor for schools, making sure we know how little children are going to get home. And they made that process very smooth. So a big shout out to our bus drivers and transportation. Also, Mr. Bradley talked about all of the, the family meetings, the one-on-one meetings. Our families showed up and they engaged in the process. And that's really what it takes to have a robust education. It takes a true partnership with families and our educators. And that collaboration between our fine teachers and staff, our students and families, that also made things very smooth to start this school year. So I appreciate all of our teachers and staff and our families connecting with us to make sure that we had that smooth. So last year, this slide represents our core values. They haven't changed for years. Passion, authenticity, and care. And those are things that we believe in. We don't, like I said, we don't plaster them on a wall. We try to live out those values. Those are important for our kids. Here's some data. I'm not going to read everyone to you all. important for our kids. Here's some data. I'm not going to read every one to you all, but something that is noteworthy is 717 authentic audience members. It's a priority for our students to be able to share their learning and understanding with people, not just their teachers. It ups the rigor level of the experience when they have to showcase their learning to someone that they may not be familiar with. Last year, we had opportunities for 717 community members come in and kids showcased their, their learning. That's, that's really special for our kids. Also, a big undertaking, and Ms. Hope Doherty has done a great job in, in leading this initiative, where we're really attacking foundational literacy and making sure our students have that strong start. 82% of our, our students demonstrated mastery in UFLI phonics skills, and you'll hear a little bit more about foundational literacy from Ms. Miles. But those are a couple of things that I feel like are noteworthy. Obviously, all of these, these data points, we're very proud of. This past year's been a year of tremendous growth, and we look forward to this current school year being much of the same. So, super proud of our, our team and all of our students for that hard work. Now, Mr. Thomas will kind of talk through how we've prioritized our strategic plan this year based upon some of these accomplishments.
If we can go to the next slide.
You got that clicker there in front of you, Alan.
Yeah, so like Mr. Hill said, we unite around a pack mentality at Foster Heights Elementary. We're blessed to have talented teachers and talented students.
Alan, did you speak into the mic? Thanks.
Yeah, we're blessed to have talented teachers and talented students that come and show their, share their gifts of passion, authenticity, and care on a daily basis. We also recognize that we own the work that we do on a daily basis. So, our strategic plan in '24, '25 is to continue to bring clarity to owning, owning the signals that we continue to build upon. The first part of that strategic plan is over-the-top expectations. Our students and leaders are held to high expectations, and through our culture surveys and other things that we do that way. Our first signal is percentage of students proficient on our anchor signals. Last year in math, one of the things that we improved upon was student ownership. Our, our teachers continued to have high rigorous questions in which students had to give their best effort through models or explanations to share their thoughts so we could give timely feedback. This year, we're continuing to build on that foundation, integrating literacy as well by having high rigorous word problems that our students have to embark on and participate in the classroom.
Just remember to speak into the mic, please.
Sorry, I'm a little short. Okay, so, as mentioned, we grew tremendously last year in foundational literacy. 82% of our K-2 students were mass meeting mastery in their UFLI phonics skills, which is great. So, definitely want to shout them out and celebrate them and our K-2 teachers. They worked really, really hard. We want to build that momentum this year by continuing pushing them, making them engaged in the lessons, and supporting our teachers and our students through those skills. But we also want to continue the growth in our 3-5. So, our 3-5 is taking on something new called Word Study portion of their day, which is the study of words, morphology. It'll build their vocabulary, which will support them in their reading and writing success. So, we're really, really proud. We're really excited to keep growing in that area, and I think it's going to be a big year for us.
And to build off of that, you know, like Megan said, we focused really heavily on foundational skills last year. So, while our K-2 was really working on building their phonics skills, their phonemic awareness skills, our 3-5 teachers were really focused on that EL education curriculum that Mr. Bradley talked about, and they really got, our teachers got really good at implementing that curriculum. That's a high-quality curriculum that builds their background knowledge so that kids do have vocabulary and knowledge to talk about literacy as well as other things happening in the world. It allows them to have discussions about things that are not just a reading curriculum, if that makes sense. So, we worked really hard on that. We're going to continue that in K-2 this year. So, K-2 did implement our EL education curriculum last year. We're going to continue to build on that and really make sure that our teachers feel comfortable in making sure that they are hitting students and meeting them just where they need and helping build that knowledge for kiddos. And then, in addition to that, we're really going to focus and take a shift into writing. If you look at our students' writing growth, and you can ask any teacher that taught last year, EL education helps student writing tremendously. They were writing every single day about a multitude of topics. So, our focus this year is to really hone in on that and make sure that our teachers have the skills that they need to teach writing effectively, and therefore, help our students grow in writing as well.
And as a part of We All Contribute, it's really important to us that our students and leaders are given opportunities to own their growth and committed to growth. And through that signal, our students, we will be looking at what percentage of students are proficient on competency signals. And this really just means our students' ability to communicate, collaborate, think critically, and create. We know that's also important in addition to our instructional core content. So, a few opportunities that we're going to provide students to allow them to grow and develop these skills is through our Related Arts Program, which will embed those competencies throughout each Related Arts course, and also allow for a competency exhibition at the end of the year. In addition, we'll also have place-based learning through Passion Ignite, our Passion Ignite system at Foster Heights for K-5, and through Dig Deep Academy. Both of these place-based learning experiences are directly aligned through the content that the teachers are teaching.
And care is one of our third core values. So, all of our students receive Husky Huddle, 15 minutes every day. So, Husky Huddle is like Care and Connect in other schools. During that time, they learn and get to practice our school core care values, and they also receive a research-based social-emotional curriculum.
And Husky Huddle is how we meet all of our students' Tier 1 needs. In order to meet those Tier 2 needs, Ms. Thomas and I create a bi-yearly needs assessment that we send out to our teachers. And in that needs assessment, teachers fill out some concerns that they may have about their students, and we take that data and we create small groups and pull kids out individually. But if we have any other kiddos that require some further support, we then can refer them out to the Nelson County Thrive Academy. And, sorry, Amber.
And lastly, under Next Level Engagement, it's also really important for us that our students and leaders are engaged in a really transformational experience in their day-to-day life. So, that would be tracked through the percentage of students with Next Level Engagement. Our teachers throughout Design Labs Leadership Pathways have been really dedicated to analyze their curriculum, make sure they're going above and beyond to provide these meaningful experiences, to increase student engagement. That's really important to us at Foster Heights. And those increased student engagement experiences will be through Next Level Lessons, and we're committed to one lesson per unit for each content area. And we're also going to continue those content area performance assessments. Like Mr. Hill mentioned, we saw a lot of success last year with being able to showcase our learning to our community members, family members, with 717 audience members. So, we're going to continue that throughout next year as well.
So, I think that, as you can see, we're really proud of the growth that we've made, but we're not resting on our laurels. We're still continuing to take risks and to make sure we're working hard on the things that matter most for our kids. Any questions from you all?
I don't have a question, Jeremy. I have a comment. Last, that last couple of months that was in the last school year, I came to a meeting, a collab meeting of your English or reading. Yes, I took notes, mind you, and it was wonderful. I heard things that I had not heard in a while, and I, I do appreciate that. You all got it, seems like that you got it down, and I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Our, our teachers and leaders work really hard to make sure we're focused on the right things. So, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Now, we're going to hear about the Arts Program Visioning. Ms. Arnold?
I think Ms. Arnold is at a pig show at State Fair. With that said, so, we've, we've been fortunate enough this summer to have our arts team come together for two solid weeks and connect and think about the future of programming. We've also had team members on our arts team continue to be flexible and agile in thinking about how they serve students across our district. Part of the conversation this summer was led by Dr. Frida Jibert, and Dr. Jibert has been an arts educator for over three decades across Kentucky, and is really has a, has a broad awareness of some of the ecosystem that exists not only in Kentucky, but has learned and continued to support our team in Nelson County. Dr. Jibert will be able to introduce some of the work tonight, and then we'll hear from the team across Nelson County schools.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There we go. Yes, I'm Dr. Frida Jibert. You've seen some of my background. I've spent over 50 hours working with the arts faculty so far this summer, and they are an incredibly talented and hard-working group. You should be very proud of the team that you have put together in the field of the arts. Flexible is a great word. They can change on a dime and do what needs to be done, which brings us to the Arts Collective. After many hours trying to figure out the best way to bring Nelson County students the level of education they need in the arts, we decided to go with something rather than a collab, we're having an Arts Collective. It's going to function a little differently because I don't know whether you know this or not, but art and artists tend to be a little different. I'm just saying. So, we had to take a different approach to this. The state guided us to some degree in that a year or two ago, they came out with a new pathway for the arts. We are implementing that through the Arts Collective. The Arts Collective is, will be open to students this year through, from grade 6 through 12. It's free of charge, of course. We will be offering music, art, drama, hopefully, digital and media courses as we grow our arts program. We will not be pulling kids out of schools, like out of regular classes, but they will function after school, before school, sometimes during school, but they will be a community of learners. So far, we have identified over 150 students in grades 12, 6 through 12, that we intend to encourage to join the Arts Collective. Do I have any questions? Great. We will have auditions here at the end of September. That way, students will be able to access this collective, and we hope excel in ways that they never dreamed possible. I'm going to go ahead and back up a little bit. No, wait, you have Art Spotlight. I didn't do that. I swear.
You can, you can do whatever you want.
Oh, good. Okay. One of the things, I will take this, Art Spotlight, one of the ways that we're doing this is through Johnny Warren at the Stephen Foster Story. We met with Mr. Warren. Many of you people know him, I'm sure, how to keep our students in the community and our community into the arts program. How do we make that function to our best advantage? And one of the ways that Mr. Warren suggested was coming up with a spotlight program that would feature some of our students, our faculty, our programs in the local media, newspapers, radio, social media. And he's sort of overseeing that program for us, so we are submitting stories and featuring students that the community gets to see what we are doing here at Nelson County. So, Mr. Warren couldn't be here tonight, so I am taking his portion and telling you that that is already in the works and on the way. So, in September, start looking for stories about your students. All right, Ms. Day.
Hi, I'm Sarah Jo Day. I'm one of the performing arts leaders at Thomas Nelson High School. Give me a second while I figure this out. Is that me? Okay, great. As Dr. Jibert said, we're very excited. We're a group of artists, very excited about art, and I just want to voice some of the offered courses that we're very excited for. She had mentioned that we're still in the process of forming a digital art program, and maybe even some costuming and lighting and technical things. I'm super excited. But with these courses, I'm not going to read this to you, but it's very, very exciting. There are some prerequisites with each program. In the music specifically, there are like beginning ensemble classes that you need to take before you get into an advanced ensemble. So, that just creates some, some diversity and lots of excitement. Something about the theater program, I know OKH has started a theater program this year, which I think is really, really awesome. And I think it's a great opportunity for them to keep growing all the way from 6th grade until they graduate in high school. I also wanted to draw your attention to the QR code at the bottom. Dr. Jibert mentioned that we have auditions end of September, I believe. I knew I should have made notes. September 23rd is the first audition at Thomas Nelson High School, and that's for anybody in those three disciplines. And then, the 25th, that Thursday, is another audition at Nelson County High School. So, we're very excited, and I think it's going to grow into something beautiful, and you never know, Nelson County might be known for their art programs. So, we're very excited. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Bradley, Honorable Members of the Board. I will be discussing how our goals and visions align with district priorities. So, priority number one, everyone is wingman. The Nelson County Schools' arts faculty have worked collaboratively throughout the summer pathways period to ensure that we have a unified vision for not only our individual arts programs, but a collective goal for the offerings, opportunities, and signaled benefits that Nelson County students will experience throughout their engagement with the fine arts. All of our middle and high school arts programs have committed to offering courses that will align to the soon-to-be-proposed Seal of Arts Excellence. Furthermore, we are all collaboratively, collectively collaborating through the establishment of an arts program dashboard and county-wide arts calendar so that we may better promote and support each other's programs and their endeavors. Beyond our collective planning for the future of Nelson County's fine arts programs, faculty have been stepping, stepping up to be wingman for each other in the classroom on a daily basis. I cannot thank Mr. Brian Edwards, Mr. Jonah Carter, and Mr. Matthew Fletcher enough for their daily commitment to our district middle school art students as they take time out of their day to ensure that the students' arts education do not falter during this time of transition and shifting teaching responsibilities. Priority two, rising tides lift all students. The Arts Collective will have rigor and high levels of practical and academic achievement at its core. Students in the collective are committed to being challenged to go further each day than the day before. Should the board approve our upcoming proposal for a Seal of Arts Excellence, students that show commitment to their art form and maintain the consistent drive towards excellence that we will expect from our Arts Collective students and that we expect for them to have for themselves, will see the growth from these rising tides of growth and personal expectations. We, as an arts faculty, believe that the next step of these rising tides for the Nelson County Arts is to establish a Seal of Arts Excellence, so that our students have a meaningful, tangible end goal to work and strive towards. And then, finally, priority number three, measure what matters. We will be monitoring the percentage of students achieving proficiency or better on quarterly district standardized community assessments. Furthermore, admission to the collective will be based on juried auditions, and the culminating experience of a student's work towards our soon-to-be-proposed Seal of Arts Excellence will be a capstone project of their own design, in an effort for students to be able to demonstrate their learning to us while we are able to measure and observe their growth as artists. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diana Williams from Nelson County High School, and I am here to speak about some of the student achievements that we have achieved already in the past, and we are hoping to build on in the future. We, in 2022, we had Alexis Gribbins was our first GSA contestant, and that received, got scholarships through the program. She's now attending center on a full ride scholarship because of the GSA program. Last year, we had 10 students to apply to the GSA program. Four of those students was chosen. We have four of those students with us, and we had one alternate student in visual art was Eden Sarlayar, and she's not here, but we have Addie Gaskell. Can I have them please stand? Where's Addie? Addie received in visual arts, Percy Workman in creative writing, Carson Keenling in vocal music, and Julian Ramirez in musical theater. And we're very proud of them, and they attended the GSA. They learned about scholarship opportunities for them for college, and they would be glad to share their experiences with you. with you after the meeting if you want to ask them anything. We have, we've had seven out of 10 AP portfolio students score three and above and receive their college credit for those programs. In the past 12 years, we have won Congressional Arts for the past 12 years. Their pieces have hung at the Capitol. Last two years, we've had the opportunity of applying for two districts, and we won both districts for the last two years, and those pieces are also at the Capitol. Last year, we had the opportunity of two students applied for the VFW Art Competition, and Addie Gaskell made it to the national level, and she won $800 in that competition, and her pieces over on the easel. And we had Dakota Kirchner made it to the district level, and she received $150 for her artwork. So these students are learning that they can produce artwork and receive awards and money toward that helps in their careers. We have alumni continuing their art education in colleges, they're continuing to learn, earn scholarships and awards to help fund their college and career. We have several students, I made a list, I won't share that list, but we've had so many students now that are going into the art fields and graduating in arts, enjoying the careers that they love to do, and you'd be happy to know that over half of these that I have on this paper, they are coming back home in Nelson County and serving our community. Thank you.
I want to say one thing before Mr. Fletcher gets started. In the spring, Ms. Williams and her very talented Nelson High, Nelson County High School students host an art show and a little bit of theater, and it is by far one of the highlights of my spring. So, I can't tell you, if you've not been, how talented these kids are in that program, and Ms. Williams does a fantastic job mentoring them and bringing out their talents. So, great job.
We, I do think we dropped the ball a little bit as a collective. We should have walked up as a collective, partially due to expedite the process, but also expedite the process, but no, just to show our unification, it's been really, it's been really powerful working with these folks over the summer, and the most positive momentum I've ever, I've ever had in this district in the 19 years I've taught here. But, I really want to shout out, our AP kids had a pretty decent year. We've had four out of six of my submissions that passed and made their, earned their college credit and got a three or above. But, the one kid that I really wanted to shout out is actually an alum, and she wasn't able to be here tonight, but Mariana Segura, who is pictured there on the bottom left, is a recent graduate from Thomas Nelson who attends this Vanna College of Art and Design. She actually went there the same year as another one. Some of you might remember Cameron Mason, he was a creative director in the district working with that team, but they're both down at SCAD and have done exceptional things. And Mariana, I always wanted to highlight because she was one of 12 recipients in all of North America in the fashion design industry, or fashion design, you know, college world, that were awarded the scholarship by Gucci. And there were, if any of you guys were like, you know, fashion people like my wife and I, she has failed me, but she is really gorgeous. But the, no, it's just a really exceptional and cool thing. I'm not going to read you the whole thing, but you can look it up. It's called Gucci Changemakers, and there are only 12 in all of North America that were awarded that honor. So I just wanted to highlight Mariana. I'll pass it over to Matt.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for providing us the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Mr. Matthew Fletcher. I'm the Director of Bands at Thomas Nelson High School. Just to highlight a few more students, on the right of the picture of Ms. Segura is our award-winning choir program. They attend Music in the Parks, and they receive continuously high marks in their division, and also continuously high marks overall as a choral program as they compete out of state and they compete within the state as well. And they also have several students achieving honor choirs, achieving, pushing the bounds of all district choir, all-state choir. So they're always constantly pushing the boundaries of what the choral program can do, and the choral program has continued to skyrocket at Thomas Nelson High School. Furthermore, on the right, there are two students that were recipients of the KMEA state-level solo ensemble, and these students received a distinguished rating in their primary instrument at the district level, and since they received a distinguished rating, they got recommended to compete at the state level against all students, against the state in the solo category of their primary instrument. Those two students are with us right now, and I'd like for them to stand when I call their name. Awarded a distinguished rating at the state level is Ms. Lindsay Hatfield on oboe. And Ms. Jamie Dugan receiving a distinguished rating on trumpet. The arts programs at Nelson County are continuing to grow. The district is continuing to grow and attracts students that are excited and inspired by the arts programs due to the support at the local high schools and middle schools of continuously supporting these students. I believe I speak for all of my arts leaders that we are incredibly proud of our students, and we cannot wait to see what they do next because they always astound and inspire us. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask all the members of the arts team to stand up and be recognized for the great work they are doing? Thank you so much. It's an honor to work with these fine teachers. Thank you, Board of Education, Superintendent Bradley, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, moving on to 4A, we have guest comments. Thank you for attending our school board meeting. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following the following rules. If you represent yourself, you're limited to three minutes. If you represent a group, you're limited to five, so you're going to step forward, state your name and address. And if you represent a group, the name of the group you're representing. I don't have the long spiel, but we understand that there's rules about, you know, how decorum and how we're going to treat others, so I'll just say that generally. It looks like the first one on my list is Amy Durbin.
Amy Durbin, Samuel's Loop, Cox's Creek, speaking on behalf of a group, Forgotten Ones.
Okay.
I have worked for Nelson County Schools for nearly nine years in roles such as credit recovery, frisk, and workforce. I'm a mother, grandmother, and lifelong citizen of this county. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of all the people that have no clue what is going on with the Nelson County School Board. I've been sitting in those chairs nearly every board meeting for the last three years, and after last month's meeting, it appears you have either a terrible memory, or you just want Nelson County to forget. My memory is not failing me, and I won't forget. I won't forget when the district found a solution to a 30-year-old problem and went from community to community, school to school, sharing a thoughtful plan that would help students, teachers, and family across our county. I won't forget the first time I saw Mrs. Milburn, Mrs. Deaton, or Mr. Norman at a board meeting. I won't forget when Mrs. Deaton attacked the district, the superintendent, and district team members. I won't forget when Mrs. Milburn's public attacks were even more aggressive and personal. I won't forget when Mr. Norman had to be asked to calm down and stand behind the microphone because he was yelling and became so angry, he started walking toward the superintendent. I won't forget the personal agendas that fueled your attacks. I won't forget when Mrs. Deaton was the city attorney for Bloomfield. I won't forget when Mrs. Milburn was appointed after having what she said was a long meeting with Mrs. Deaton. I won't forget Ms. Berry fighting against Thomas Nelson for the last decade. I won't forget when Mrs. Deaton sued the district to stop the facility plan, then ran for board. I won't forget when Mr. Norman took $5,000 from people suing the district. I won't forget when Mr. Norman and Mrs. Deaton said whatever they needed to say to get elected. Stop-waste spending was my favorite, because I won't forget that you wasted millions of tax dollars. And I won't forget when Ms. Berry voted yes 17 times for the community campus plan. And I won't forget when Ms. Berry called three special call meetings to sell the bonds. I won't forget when Mrs. Deaton took Ms. Berry behind the curtain before one of those special call meetings. I won't forget when Ms. Berry blamed everyone else for why she couldn't make a decision. I won't forget when Ms. Berry insulted teachers across the county. I won't forget when Mrs. Deaton and Ms. Berry tried to bully Mr. Hill and Mrs. Clark publicly about test scores. I won't forget that most of you have refused to answer questions or respond to emails. I won't forget that you refused to speak publicly when making life-changing decisions for families. I won't forget when Ms. Berry sent emails disparaging students at Thomas Nelson. I won't forget when Ms. Berry sent confidential information to her friends. I won't forget when Mr. Norman said that staff at Thomas Nelson would pay for campaigning against him. I won't forget the divisiveness this board has caused our district and community. I won't forget that you have stopped people from speaking publicly. I won't forget that you now tell people what they can and cannot say in guest comments. I won't forget when a high-standing attorney resigned due to board corruption. I won't forget when Mr. Jacky, a 15-year board member, resigned due to the same corruption. I won't forget the great families that chose to leave the district because of your corruption. And I won't forget the students that protested this corruption. I won't forget when Ms. Berry said, "It is what it is," to the half million dollars in attorney fees to cover up your corruption. I won't forget when Mrs. Deaton said, "I can contact an attorney as an individual and hire the only person in the state that would file charges against the superintendent." I won't forget when Mrs. Deaton tricked Mr. Norman into thinking Ms. Bowling was the one to blame for these legal fees. I won't forget when employees spoke up, you threatened the superintendent's job. I won't forget the fake charges you made against the superintendent that were in fact what you should be charged with. I won't forget reading the 90 ethical concerns the superintendent laid out with evidence. I won't forget Mrs. Deaton desperately contacting anyone in the state that would write a letter on her behalf. I won't forget when this didn't work, you just blamed everyone else. I won't forget when you turned yourselves into victims. I won't forget that you never taken responsibility for anything. And I won't forget you simply sit silently and sit in silent solidarity. And I won't forget the cowardice, ego, and shame this silence stands for. For the future of this community, I won't forget.
It's on behalf of the group. So Damon Jackie, tonight, I am speaking on behalf of a group of former Nelson County School Board members. Not present tonight, but additional former School Board members who have added their name to our comments include Rebecca Die, Adam Wheatley, and Nikki Rapier. Between those of us here and those three I just mentioned, we have a combined almost 50 years of School Board service to the Nelson County Schools, as well as numerous other public service capacities. One of the first things we learn as School Board members is how little we actually know about the workings of a public school district. Whether it is the art and skill of classroom instruction, the challenges of transporting thousands of students to and from school each day, the complexities of school funding, or any number of other topics, board members discover that just because they attended school does not make them an expert at schools. While chatting with Adam Wheatley, he reminded me of an example years ago when Jeff Marchese came to the board requesting the purchase of school buses, but was not recommending the cheapest model. The reason being that a slightly more expensive model was one the district already had numerous examples of, which meant familiarity, required tools, needed parts, and so on, more than offset the higher costs. An example where highly effective board members realize they need to rely upon the expertise of staff from across the district who are their true experts on instruction and how schools run most efficiently and effectively. This is a concept that appears to be lost on the majority of the current board, as an example being when Amanda Deaton pulled a spreadsheet of simple numbers from her purse earlier this year and proceeded to push a vote without any consultation with district experts or community forums, as opposed to work that took multiple years and dozens and dozens of people to come up with a plan. This plan of hers, which has become known as the Purse Plan across the community, has created concerns from parents about transportation, complaints about long drop-off and pickup lines at OKH Middle School, and I am sure has created undeserving stress on staff and students alike. While the staff impacted by the Purse Plan have done amazing work to adapt to a single person's desire, it is still an example of how not to be a leader by ignoring the vast number of years of experience developed by staff across the district. Another example is when it comes to the annual evaluation of the superintendent. When Ms. Breeding became a board member, the annual evaluation occurred in June. The evaluation form used is multiple pages consisting of seven main areas to be evaluated, and each of those areas have several indicators to reflect on, discuss, and score. After being on the board for six months, Ms. Breeding, who's an expert in employee evaluations, told the rest of the board that she didn't believe she had learned enough to evaluate the superintendent so soon. This led to the board to change the annual evaluation to December, allowing new board members a full year to see the superintendent in action and learn how schools work. It should concern the public that only two hours after being sworn in as a board member last December, Nicole Milburn, who is absent tonight, believed that she not only understood a very complex and long evaluation form, but also had learned enough about the work of Superintendent Bradley and how your schools function, that she could provide a high-quality superintendent evaluation. Being an effective board member also means that you must hold yourself to a higher standard and avoid appearances of conflicts of interest. These and more expectations are enshrined in the code of ethics that the board has adopted as a policy. The public should be watchful and ask questions when actions by more board members contradict this code of ethics. You should question whether the actions taken by David Norman are influenced by the thousands of dollars in campaign donations, whether the actions taken by Amanda Deaton have been swayed by being one of the original plaintiffs in a lawsuit, or whether the actions taken by Diane Berry are swayed by her niece, who she raised, as being one of those same plaintiffs. A voting majority of the board, all with connections to the same lawsuit, does that sound like a conflict of interest to members of the public?
Hello, my name is Karen Lee. I live at 4007 Mary Jo Boulevard in Bardstown, and I'm representing myself as an individual. Hello, this evening, I'd like to shout out a very unique and special program, the Education Collab housed here at Foster Heights Elementary School. The program was recently recognized on the July 29th episode of KET's Kentucky Tonight, focused on K through 12 education. At a time when districts across the nation are searching for long-term solutions to staffing shortages, Representative James Tipton noted Nelson County as a leading example in Grow Your Own programs that introduced high school students to coursework and careers in education. The importance of this program is supported by more than 20 years of extensive research by Linda Darling Hammond, Ann Podolsky, The Learning Institute, and others, that shows developing part pathways and academies for local students to remain in their communities is the most effective means of producing and retaining high-quality teachers. The Ed Collab in Nelson County is one of the first programs in the nation to finally bridge the gap between research and practice. And our students are thriving. If you keep up with the Ed Collab under their Grow Nelson Facebook page, you've likely seen how well our students are performing. With three- seen how well our students are performing, with three students placing in the top 10 at the National Educators Rising Competition last month and serving as featured presenters at the state's annual teacher apprenticeship summit in Bowling Green this spring. The program continues to grow in enrollment each year and accounts for more than half of the state's current number of registered adult and youth teacher apprentices. More than 20 districts across the state are now looking to the Nelson County model and are beginning to implement their own programs. When I worked with the Nelson County team in designing the state's first K-12 registered teacher apprenticeship and securing grant funding to support it, we knew we had something special, but this program and these students are truly surpassing all expectations. It is under the leadership of our rock star teachers, Sarah Durst and Jessica Holt. Congratulations to the program leaders, the many staff who mentored these students in their classrooms, and to these Ed Collab students who are the future of Nelson County.
Adam Gossem. Okay. Melissa Parrish.
Hi, I'm Melissa Parrish. I'm from New Haven, representing New Haven parents. Thank you for the time to speak, and I want to thank you that the one other time that I did come up, you let me finish and cut me off. I appreciate that. I'd like to correct a few contradictions that have been made first. It is always the same people that get up here. This is only the second time I've ever spoken to a board in my life. I never felt the need to before this past year. Watching the last couple of years trying to keep up, it became obvious that the people that were in a position to be representatives and a voice for the people were not actually there for those reasons. Another quote, "The reason we do not respond is because the messages are filled with venom." An open records request could easily show this is not the case. Another reason I know this not to be true is because the very first email I ever sent to this board was before Ms. Deaton and Mr. Norman were even elected. I sent an email to everyone running and the current board members at the time, asking a lot of questions, wanting to make an informed decision, and inquiring where they stood on issues that mattered to myself and my family. Anyone want to guess how many responses I received? I received two, one from Ms. Bowling and one from Adam Gossem. I did not agree on every issue with them, but at least they took the time and were courteous enough to respond to each question. Many more emails have been sent since then with zero response. The narrative that it's just a few fringe people against this board, that there really is a silent majority in support of them, but yet our inboxes have been full. Both of these statements cannot be true. And one that came straight from the mouth of the current board chair, my own mouth fell open when I heard. The reason that we cannot allow Thomas Nelson campus as an option for New Haven and Boston middle school students is because if we did, everyone would want to go there. If that doesn't contradict the narrative coming from this board, I don't know what does. Let's be clear, by running for one of the seats on a Board of Education for a public school system, it should not seem audacious or nasty to expect them to articulate the good reasons for their decisions and why it is best for those public school children that they represent, to be able to each explain the reasons for their votes and to respond courteously to stakeholders, to work together and listen to the parents and educators that work with these children every day. Asking for clarity and transparency is not a nasty, crazy thing. If this board would have implemented the District Facility Plan, the DFP, that was years in the making, and followed all the proper channels, my son would have been starting this year in a state-of-the-art middle school wing on Thomas Nelson campus where his older siblings go. Instead, he is spending one year, his eighth-grade year, at OKH. Of course, we have chosen to be positive and tell him we are going to make the best of it, but do not kid yourself. Your decision did cause a lot of heartache for him. And just like I asked before, I ask again, would you have made that decision, which I have heard one board member say is only temporary, if it were your childhood affected that way? I don't think so. And another contradiction this brings to mind is the former board chair was very concerned about middle school students being in a wing of the community campus. Currently, under the decision she voted for recently, there are middle schoolers being bussed in the middle of the day to do what? Learn right alongside high schoolers. It seems a little less efficient, and all of a sudden, middle schoolers on the same campus doesn't seem to be an issue. If the DFP had been followed, New Haven School would have now been renovated. The HVAC might be consistent in every room, not freezing in one and burning up in another. My two youngest would have been learning in the benefits of that. There also might be dedicated lanes for foot traffic, cars, and buses. It would be a lot less safety risk. You moved the middle schoolers out of New Haven under the guise of moving forward with renovation, and their eighth-grade year was taken away and still no renovation. Recently, a board member asked at a board meeting, "Do we need a committee regarding this renovation?" I was on that committee years ago. That has already been done. There's been a lot of time and money and heartache wasted. Let's not waste more by repeating committees. After all the time and money wasted to get rid of our superintendent, we had an educational commissioner respond to reinstate him and say there was no evidence proving any allegations made by the board. We more recently had yet another educational commissioner say, "No audit is needed for Nelson County Public Schools." And not only that, but quote, "Interviews indicated that board members do not have a clear understanding of their roles and responsibilities." I have not been to board member training. Even without doing so, I would venture to guess included in your role and responsibility is not to carry out a vendetta against someone, to do everything to keep Bloomfield Middle School operating in a middle school to the detriment of other students in the county, or to try to make decisions to have one high school with more sports trophies. I would say that might be where the mark was missed. Your role and responsibility should be pretty simple. Listen to stakeholders and the people that are working with students every day to make choices that are best for all public school students. So we ask again, please be honorable. Don't just make decisions that are possible, but listen to make decisions that are the very best for all these students. Don't waste any more time and move forward, please, with the DFP.
Thank you. Tiffany Clark.
Individual Tiffany Clark, Springfield. In previous board meetings, one of the few policies discussed in detail was guest comments. Despite some misunderstandings among board members, it's important to clarify that guest comments are not limited to agenda items. This restriction applies to only board members who can only discuss items listed on the agenda. Additionally, there was an extended discussion regarding what can and cannot be stated during public comments. I want to specifically remind Ms. Deaton and Ms. Milburn that both of you, prior to joining the board, spoke directly to and about board members during guest comments, including the superintendent. I also want to address the requests made by certain board members, whose names I won't mention because it would only be speculation at this point, for Mr. Hill and myself to stand before the board and answer questions about test scores that were also rather spontaneous, that didn't allow us time to prepare, but we were expected to respond. While I have no issue discussing topics related to my role or even my personal beliefs, I want to highlight the double standards being applied when it comes to guest comments. It should be clear that at board meetings, we should be allowed to mention names, ask questions, and make statements directly related to your roles, just as you have done in the past and that you expect of us. While you may not appreciate certain comments or questions posed to you, they should be allowed without being cut off by the board. As Mr. Norman has frequently stated, accountability is crucial, and our community has the right to pursue it through guest comments. This is an addition, so it doesn't flow as nicely. After the decision to remove the agenda item concerning Amendment 2, I'm left still wondering why our board can't be transparent and engage in open dialogue with our community. By silencing discussions and imposing restrictions on what can and cannot be said, the board only fosters additional division and increases the community's distrust in each one of your intentions.
Matt Hoise.
For a group. Since the last time I stood up here at a board meeting, we've had a lot to celebrate, really. The work the Arts Team does, I was really excited about sharing that with you all. I think, like I said earlier, I've never seen momentum like we have currently. It's been wonderful. This spring, we graduated a class of students that I am immensely proud of. Of course, there were a couple that we had to drag across the finish line, but watching those tough kids embrace those teachers that did not give up on them, I have to shout out Amy Durbin is the pillar, the example of that person that doesn't quit on the hardest kids. It was really, really powerful. My athletes won a couple state titles. We broke a couple more state records. We won a national title. Got a kid that just signed with Notre Dame. It's pretty next-level stuff. It's not really why I'm here, but y'all gave me a microphone, so. The standard doesn't really get it, so, you know what I mean, I'm going to brag on it some, but really, I'm here to thank you all. I'm here to challenge you. Again, I've mentioned this before, I want to thank you all for taking on this role of public service. I mean, you are the chosen representatives of the communities that you serve, and I'm sure that you took those roles because you care deeply about the schools and those communities. So I hope you do all of this because you care about the kids that are directly affected by the decisions that you make. The group I'm representing is a growing one, and until we can come up with like a catchier or cool name or an acronym, we're calling ourselves Educators and Advocates. Our hope is to make the upcoming election cycle a healthy one. We want it to be less contentious than the previous one. We want it to be centered on kids, one that is less partisan. This is not a racist red or blue. The dichotomy of the board politics that this county has been put through lately is just difficult, and it could potentially have ripple effects that will take years for us to recover from. So just please, just listen to the people who are speaking up. Our first big ask is that anyone running for a board to you, whether you're trying to hang on to one, or Jody or Karen, you're trying to earn one, is that, you know, you listen to those stakeholders, whether it's the kids, the parents, the teachers, the admins, community members who no longer have a dog in this fight, you see that quoted quite often, but listen less to your campaign financial backers. Please do not be bought by a representative. Please, or please be a representative that puts your district and the kids in it first. Please be transparent about your vision for the district moving forward. That's all we want to do, is move forward and have, you know, just a place that our kids, our families want to send their kids. Be honest in the messages that you're speaking, whether it's directly or indirectly through your campaign. In the last cycle, there were people in one of those districts that were up, were canvassing, going door-to-door, telling these people that if you vote for so-and-so, they're going to close our school. And that was never the pick, you know, it was just, the striking fear in uninformed voters is just dirty politics, and it's not putting our kids first. I'm asking you to not weaponize enrollment numbers. So somebody who's already at our school, they wanted to know right off the bat, what is your enrollment? And hopefully, they wanted that number to be high. I mean, I hope that they were there and they wanted to hear a high number because they were excited about all the kids that wanted to be in our school and not wanting it to be low, so they can say, "Well, look, we don't need two high schools. Look, they only have so many kids." Like, let's look for our path forward. Let's make families want to be in our schools. I have a sad story. I think I have enough time to get through it. You know, I coach track and cross country, and that community is really pretty tight. And we had a kid who was, he'd come up running through the Bethlem program, and his eighth-grade year, his family reached out vehemently against recruiting, but regardless, they were just exploring different options. They toured St. X, they toured Thomas Nelson, and both of them, they all really appreciated our team. Like, the running community is very weird. We all cheer for one another, even though we're all like super competitive. Anyhow, long story short is that he didn't come. And for the first time since Thomas Nelson has opened its doors, every eighth grader from St. Gregory went to Bethlem. And sadly, it's, you know, and not exactly what this family told me, but what they said is the basic rationale of all of the families that influenced their decision, he just wanted to go where his friends were. All of them were going there, and they were just scared about the decisions that our board might make. And that, unfortunately, is hammering our enrollment. So weaponizing our enrollment isn't really going to be a path forward. So we thrive in a healthy hive, a community of trust, integrity, and putting our kids first.
Jessica Ho.
Speaking for myself. Jessica Ho, Cox's Creek. So, well, one, I didn't really know if I was going to get the chance to speak because I've heard so many rules thrown out. If we're going to have 15 minutes of guest comments, if we're going to have 30, if we're going to have more, it seems that that changes every meeting. So I guess it just depends on who signed up. So I was really looking forward to hearing more about Amendment 2 from our board members, but since that's no longer on the agenda, I want to just kind of give some context to what Amendment 2 is. And somebody sent me a really great, non-biased, I would think, the most unbiased that you could get, about Amendment 2. So one thing that struck me was who supports it and who opposes it. So supporters, many people, especially some lawmakers, think that this bill is a good idea. They believe it will help families choose the best education for their kids. Opponents of it, so some people, including those who care about public schools, worry that this could take money away from public education, and they're concerned that private schools might not be as good or fair as public schools. Again, that is all, that's kind of the two sides of it. I have my own opinion about it based on the information that I've been able to research. I would hope that you all have done the same. It's not illegal for board members to discuss this amendment. Actually, KSBA put out a very lengthy document to kind of help guide board members in having that discussion, and KSBA actually opposes Amendment 2 as well. So anyways, not to stir anyone's opinion, I strongly encourage everyone to do their own research on Amendment 2, and I would love to hear more about what you all think about it because you all are making decisions for students, so I would hope that you would want what is best for public schools. And then to also kind of go back to what Ms. Amy Durbin said, I just want to make sure that everyone knows, like, we have not forgotten that you all voted last year to go to one high school. That hasn't been forgotten. So going into schools and acting like you're concerned about enrollment, or you want to know enrollment, like, we haven't forgotten what happened last October, and we definitely have not forgotten that you all are probably just staying quiet on it because election's coming up and you're hoping that people will just, you know, forget everything, but we're going to make sure that people don't forget. So, thank you.
This is going to be the last one, and it's Mary Spalding.
In November's election, voters will see this proposal. The General Assembly may provide financial support for the education of students outside the system of common schools. As a retired teacher from both public and parochial schools, I am an advocate for all students, and I stand strongly against Amendment 2. First, school funding, from SIC formulas to the differing rates in local property taxing, is very complex, but the bottom line is that there is a limited amount of public financial support. Any dollars given to students outside the system of common or public schools are dollars taken away from those schools. Second, there is no clarity about possible implementation of this financial support. Second, there is no clarity about possible implementation of this financial support. Just how will it look? And how will it be regulated? My best guesses are derived from seeing Kentucky legislation that has been passed in recent years and then struck down as unconstitutional. This leads me to believe, to expect charter schools and vouchers, both with many more unanswered questions about accountability. The Kentucky Center for Economic Policy applied a Florida-style voucher model to predict that Kentucky would need 30% of its current allocations to public schools to support a private school voucher system. For Nelson County, that translates into a 10% budget reduction, 53 educator job cuts, and over $6 million in lost funding. It is deceptive to characterize this amendment as being about parents having school choice. It is about spending public money for which one is accountable to private schools that are not accountable. School choice does now exist both among and within our schools. Third, the majority of existing private schools in Kentucky are affiliated with organized religion. If separation of church and state is a guiding principle in American government, do we really want to spend public tax dollars for religious schools? Legally, that is a violation of the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment of the Constitution. Although I completely support the right of any religious school to exist, it is necessary that their costs be borne privately. I personally attended a wonderful parochial school, much of my own, for much of my own education, but it was financed by the Archdiocese, our parish, and my parents. This amendment, if passed, will profoundly affect our system. I feel obligated to educate myself about the issue and speak out about it. I see no reason to censor discussion of something so vital to the future of our schools. Let's talk about it.
Okay, moving on, we have the monthly consent agenda. I think everyone has been, had an opportunity to look over that. If there's no comments, we can go ahead and have a motion. Does anybody have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion.
Okay. Mr. Norman, do I have a motion? Do I have a second, Ms. Berry?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All right, motion passes. Personnel notifications, we just acknowledge receipt of personnel notifications. No action is required there. All right, Ms. Tucker is gonna talk to us about diverse learning.
Good evening. So I've got a few different things here tonight on the agenda. The first one I'm really excited about, I'm sure Ms. Berry's aware, if not, I'm sure most of you all are aware, that recently, we no longer have emergency certification as an option for special education, education degrees. And really, that's caused statewide shortages, nationwide shortages of really highly sought-after and needed positions in our school districts. So I have been working collaboratively with EPSB on a teacher program that allows us to have highly certified, qualified leaders who are seeking to come to the Nelson County schools. And through that process, they have learning behavioral disorder certifications. They will apply to our schools, just like any other candidate would do. And I'm really excited just to continue to work with EPSB, to work with Board Attorney, to see about what options we have, to continue to have the most qualified, certified professionals working with our diverse learning students. So I'm just asking for your approval to continue working with Career Studios for that program.
Absolutely. Do we have a motion to approve this move forward with teacher exchange program with Career Studios?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Ms. Bowling, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? I don't hear anybody opposed, so motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Thank you very much. The next two, we have a speech-language pathologist contract. It's really great because we have a returning member who worked with the Nelson County schools before. But we currently have two speech-language pathologist openings, and so we're constantly just trying to ebb and flow to make sure our students are getting their services. I do really want to celebrate the community partners that we've had with contract services. There are multiple districts that I'm highly connected with who currently do not have the availability of providers in their district. And we have not been faced with that. We have great community partners. So the first contract is to provide an SLP, services for this contract year, to make sure our students are getting speech and language services. So I'm asking for your approval of that one. And then I'll go ahead and pair that with, we have been working with a BCBA, so a board certified behavior analyst. Through that support, behavioral support, we have seen great dividends and really great experiences for our students who are seeking a higher level of care through their education and through behavior supports. With that, we currently had a contract with that BCBA, and because of the needed support, they have revised the contract and lowered that $50 an hour for us. So that just shows the, really the gifts of people and the connection and the network that we create. They see a need, and so I just want to revise that contract with that lower price. So I'm just asking for your approval of those two items.
Okay, so I guess the motion would be to allow revision of the contract as described?
It's an updated MOA.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion for the updated MOA. Does anybody second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Ms. Hogan?
I'm just asking for approval of the memorandum of agreement with Campbellville University for student teachers. That's an annual agreement that I come to you every year and ask for approval on. It just allows us to bring in student teachers from Campbellville University to do their student teaching in the district.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the MOA as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Norman, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? I think motion passes. Okay, regarding the bus purchase, Mr. O'Brien?
All right, excuse me. So I came before y'all last month, I'm asking approval for bus purchases. Unfortunately, we was in that really odd time, the end of the fiscal year. So when I went to place the bus purchases, they advised me that there had been a new price list released to KDE, and they can accept the order at the prices that was approved. So we're just coming back tonight, asking for approval at the updated prices. It was $5,807 more per bus. So that would be a total of $728,125 for the five buses. Again, we'll get $125,000 of that back with the grant, making it $603,125.
Okay, so this is an updated bus purchase request. Do we have a motion to approve that as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Norman, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Bowling, all in favor? None opposed? Motion carries.
All right, in the second part tonight, following a training we went to, they advised us to look at this policy and make sure that it actually aligned with what we was doing, checking into it. It was a little bit off. The big change is down here at the bottom, changing from a maximum of 10-day suspension on the bus to a maximum of 15 days off the bus per occurrence. So that's really like third offense stuff, so we go a 5, 10, 15-day period. So it's just asking for approval to update that policy to match the discipline matrix.
Do we need to read that in full, or can we just approve it as presented? I guess we have approval of the first reading, so.
We're just reviewing the summary, I bet, we don't read that.
Okay, okay. So do we have a motion to approve the first reading of the policy as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second. All in favor? All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, Ms. Provis?
All righty, so we are revisiting this month, the guest comments policy that we spoke about last month after board discussion and some recommendation. We've updated the wording to reflect the requests by the board, so we're just asking for approval of that policy.
And you added a definition, I think, which is appropriate of personal attack. So that's, I think if you scroll down, you can see that in that last paragraph. So, all right. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading of this guest comment policy?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Bowling made a motion, second? Okay. Ms. Berry, all in favor? All right, none opposed? The motion carries. Thank you for fixing that. Okay, Ms. Berry, did you have something you wanted to present?
I didn't know I was presenting, to be truthful.
Okay, there we go.
All I said was, we want to make sure that parents understand and students understand no cell phones in the classroom.
Correct, so.
That's all I wanted.
So Ms. Case asked me to step in for her. She's not here today. This is right in her wheelhouse, obviously. So Ms. Case partners with all of our schools, particularly, this conversation, I think, pertains to our 6 through 12 middle school and high school spaces. She works alongside our assistant principals and principals on creating strong school culture. And many of those things really revolve around high expectations for students. So just to clarify, the expectation we have across the district, at the middle school level, students are required to put their cell phones in their lockers at the beginning of the day. They're locked there for the duration of the day. At the end of the day, they're able to get those out before they go home. At the high school setting, students are allowed to have their cell phones on them, but upon entering the threshold of the classroom, they are required to have them put away, which really means out of sight, and they're not to get those out during the duration of instruction. So that's the expectation we have across the district. And again, we're working with our principals and assistant principals on making that come to life each day. The particular policy that's referenced here really is about more egregious things such as harassment or recording a fight, things of that nature is what the policy currently reads. We feel strongly, with the procedures we put in place, that we can uphold that expectation district-wide.
So was this a policy that was already in place?
So we've had this policy. This policy's been in place, yes. Really, some of the things that I spoke about that Ms. Case works with doesn't, isn't directly related in this policy, but obviously, that's practice that we engage in every year and every day.
Okay. All right. Thank you for presenting that. I appreciate that.
It never hurts to reiterate.
Okay, moving on to seven, the KDE assessment accountability update. We know Ms. Arnold isn't here, so Superintendent Bradley?
I'll be, I'll be pretty straightforward here. This is only just an update. If you go to the Kentucky Department of Education website, you can learn more. Most recently, the Kentucky Board of Education talked about a shift in state accountability that they're evaluating. They're asking for stakeholder feedback. They're also asking for local superintendents to provide feedback. And to be, to be clear, the connections to what we started November 29th, 2022, is very similar to the work that we've started. In fact, if you go to our district website and click on next data dashboard, you can see that work across the Nelson County schools. It'll tell you a little bit more about the benefits and signals that we're tracking as a district. We've talked about this, we sat in this gym with families last October and talked about the shift in funding, I mean, the shift in accountability. And that's pretty much what the state is now putting out. So just to make it clear, they're really looking at how do assessment and accountability systems benefit students? How does it adapt for the diversity of students? How can there be multiple pathways to success? And I think this is really important if you're an educator, ongoing reporting rather than a once-a-year reporting process, especially for core subject areas. What that would look like would be more of a ongoing, common assessment where you're getting data on the spot that the state also has access to, but you're looking at the focus of growth for students over time rather than just a school as a whole and labeling that school. This is Kentucky's process. Note that this, this will not take effect until the earliest 2026. So that's, that's still two years away. But there, you'll hear a lot of conversations about this across the state of Kentucky, and it very much aligns to many of the processes we have in place. You're gonna see this idea of learning that matters to students. How do we include that in the accountability system? These are all directly from the KDE website. "Vibrant learning experiences" is the words they're using, where students would be presenting and sharing with the community and be evaluated by community as a part of that process. Accreditation rather than just grades. We know that grades mean little to the outside world. If a kid gets an A in their junior year, algebra means very little, but if they have accreditation that aligns to industry need, it matters a lot. Again, right now, they're evaluating the whole school. They're looking to evaluate individual students and the growth of individual students as opposed to just a whole cohort. And these are just some other options. I think too, Indiana has been a pioneer along with Kentucky. A big push in both states right now is community partnership, building the bridge for graduates through work-based learning. Both Kentucky and Indiana are really reciprocating that heavily. So in that way, you know, currently in the Nelson County schools, we have seen major growth in our own work because of this work. 600 dual-credit students last year. We expect about 700 this year. 236 AP courses currently enrolled in. 70 students right now are projected to get their associate's degrees in our schools. And that would be 70 more than we had five or six years ago. We currently have 24 career pathways. That's increased by about 35% over the last five years. We have 700 middle school students this year in college and career connects, and 300 students in work-based learning. A lot of this is a part of this idea of connecting our students to college career community. So I share that, really, we are, and I know that there's a, there's been a lot of conversations over the past couple of years around state accountability. You can go to the KDE website, read more about this. They're prototyping. And this is the number one goal of the Kentucky Department of Education right now, in KBE, is to begin to think about assessment, because there's so many negative unintended consequences of bad state assessments. And the assessment system controls everything. Really, it controls what happens in schools because, as you've seen in Nelson County, you can really get, those can be weaponized against you. And that's something that the state's really looking closely at. How do we support schools engaging in better conversations with their communities, and engaging in better conversations with educators and boards about how do you find the, master the basics, monitor that frequently, and go beyond to do those things that are gonna benefit students long-term? So I share that because it's a statewide conversation. And Ms. Berry, you shared this Kentucky Innovation Guide, which is essentially building off the same ideas. So, any questions about accountability?
Yeah, where I have a, I don't have a problem. I have spoken to the commissioner before, how to evaluate or assess work-based learning. And that is a tough thing to do. And that's what they're working on too, is how that part of a student's life is being assessed. Because, you know, when you go to work, it is hard to assess what, how they do, and what to give. Yeah.
We have some local systems that, if you wanted to go on a job site visit with our workforce team, they could walk you through that process of how they're working to assess students.
Well, when one goes, like, he goes and makes sure that a student is there, but I'm just saying, let's say you're working, I'm not talking about, let's say, a lawyer or a doctor. How do you assess that? How do those, how does that come about? See, that's what.
Yeah, so we have three competencies.
I mean, you talk to their, it's like in Amanda's office. How do you assess what she did without, you know, giving some kind of a pass fail or whatever? So it's important that those kids know what they're doing. I mean, it's important that we know what they're doing and how they're doing.
I agree. And I think, again, I would encourage you to work with the team and go on some of those site visits, look at the rubrics they're using. We're, since we're pioneering the work, really, we're on the front edge of that. We're learning a lot. It's, you know, it's highly imperfect, but we're learning a lot about it.
It'll get better.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Moving on to the facility planning updates in, can't read, it's such small, FMV BG1.
So each meeting, we'll just revisit some of the facility projects that we have going on, just kind of provide some updates on how those are going. We have a full team here today. So really, to start with the UpCenter and the bus garage, so we had our first construction meeting today. There were about, Mr. Mattingly was there. We had probably 20 or so contractors that were on the job. The Eric, what's his last name? Eric Meredith is in charge, really, the site work, and he's there every day overseeing the job. Mr. Codell, Codell Construction led that meeting. And really, they talked about really what the next few months are gonna look like, and obviously, making sure. what the next few months are going to look like, and obviously making sure a lot of the team members are on the same page. One big conversation that's currently occurring now is the utilities that are really under the space. A lot of that demo work's going to have to occur, and so they talked about how they make adjustments to that while school and the bus garage obviously has a lot of movement right there. The ATC's really continuing to operate in that space. So how do we overcome that, those utility challenges, being that we're trying to keep school open? So that's a big conversation. We're really hoping to leverage fall break when school's not in session there to really make that happen. I would say over the course of the next two months, you'll really be able to see things moving per se in terms of construction that you can see. There's obviously been a lot of administrative-type things that have occurred, and it's difficult to see that, but they are making progress on that really every day. The other conversations are on our athletic facilities that are occurring at Nelson County High School in Thomas Nelson. I spoke about that last board meeting. The, and again, the two projects are very different. Essentially, Nelson County High, where they already had turf already laid down, all of the dirt work or site work is really already prepared. They were able to strip that off and add the new turf very quickly. That project is ahead of schedule and is, at this point in time, completed, I believe. Mr. Ward did a walkthrough today, kind of checking the final specs on that. On the other side of the spectrum, Thomas Nelson, we had several challenges really with that project. One of those is really the soil density presented lots of challenges around first of July. We also had some unexpected, unfortunate circumstances on the members of the team and their family, so that set us back a bit. Long story short, that project has been delayed, but we're hoping to finish up, really, the first of October would be when that facility is really ready to go. Obviously, the biggest impact on that space is the football community, middle school football, JV football, varsity football. We've worked alongside Coach Peak. He's obviously in conversation with those folks. We've recently drafted a letter, really communicating some of the challenges we had and really next steps on what we're going to do. He's working with local communities and other facilities to relocate some of those games, so those folks are in the know. Just know that that project is still going on, but we're hoping for a target, the first home, the first available game that they may be able to host at the varsity level would be around October 4th. That's our new target date. Any questions on any of those projects?
Tennis, are you getting to the tennis courts?
So the tennis courts, we added some drainage to get the water off of the rock. When they started milling it off, the base was collapsing, just like the football field. There's like three feet of clay down underneath of it, and that's, when they brought the heavy trucks in, we had some running. So we're letting that dry out really good, and then we're going to look at our next steps and hope the drainage just helps. And it is getting a lot of water out of it. It's just, how can we go through that next process?
Okay, thank you.
The Thomas Nelson property has a lot of rock in it too, which creates some issues we found running into on the football field at times as well, but the tennis courts and the football field are all a part of just that soil density issue that we're having with clay. Mr. Ward can tell you all about it.
So the next item we want to talk about is the Nelson County High School FMD MSD BG1. So really, so that space, what we're looking to do is it's to accommodate it better, to really suit the needs of our students inside that space. The, what we'd like to add are really bathroom modifications in that space to allow them to be able to provide for students inside the space, as opposed to going outside the hallway and really walking across the school to provide that opportunity. So really, long story short, and Mr. Manningly can talk about some of the details, we wanted to add essentially a toilet and a shower inside that space. Minor project. It is required to have a BG1 due to the permitting issues, and so we're asking you guys to approve that BG1, to really get that project started, so that we can make those modifications.
And where exactly, where exactly would that be?
So that facility, that part of the building's located in D Hall.
Okay.
Really across from the cafeteria. We're hoping that in terms of classroom or school interruptions would be very minimal. It's just a small section of the school that we would have to do construction on to really make this project come to life, but hopefully over the course of the next couple of months, we'll be able to provide that. So for that item, we are asking that you approve that BG1. But we also have, Mr. Ward has a few change orders that he would like to go over as far as the athletic facilities.
So as you guys know, as we start construction on anything, there will be things that come up and change orders, and that's what the architects and the construction managers get to have fun with talking about every month.
Yes, yeah, so I've got three change orders to talk about tonight. The first one is a good news change order. The Nelson County High School track project that Alex described, it was ahead of schedule. We also had very good luck with the soil. We actually, we were prepared in advance. In that case, we had been warned about the quality of the soil. So we built into the project some protections, some, in this case, it was cement stabilization that was built into the project. We had prepared for a certain amount of that to be done, which would have covered the full track area. The amount that we had put into the contract was not used, so we get to now have a credit to the contract of $22,400, and, and the stabilization that needed to happen did happen, so. That one came out well. The second one I want to talk to you about is, is sort of the opposite. At Thomas Nelson, the, the soil, when they started to proof roll it, which is basically when they drive the trucks on it to prove that it can sustain the weight that it needs to sustain, it continually failed the proof rolls. It didn't help that we had some really strong rains during that period of time. The, the unique fatty clay in this part of the county, it fails pretty easily when it gets wet. So the total for that change order number one for the Thomas Nelson project was an add of $55,398.61. What that was for was to increase the thickness and the performance of the structural geotextile underneath the, the base soil. There was a geotextile already specified in the documents that the civil engineer prepared. This changed that out for a thicker one that will perform better, and it did pass the proof rolls, so we're, we're past that problem now at least. The third one was more of a discretionary one. Because the goalposts were already going to be taken down as part of the work, it was recommended by the contractor that it would be easier to go ahead and refinish, repaint those goalposts now, and the district staff asked that we go ahead and do the practice fields at the same time. I saw them refurbishing the goalposts at Nelson County today, and it's pretty difficult when they're up in place, so doing this now when they're down for this renovation is, is a good idea. So that third change order was $7,205. So those are the three that we've asked for approval for tonight. For Thomas Nelson, there will be one more. There, the contractor was responsible for removal of any rock they encountered, and they did encounter rock as they were putting in the storm drainage. What they are not responsible for is replacing that rock with, with new engineered fill material. There was a unit price in the contract, so as much fill as they have to place, we have a price for it already. It's not, they don't get to ask for what they want. It gets tracked, and they will be paid for exactly what rock they replaced. So that one will still come. We haven't gotten to the final number for that yet. So these three are the ones I'm asking for this evening.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve these three change orders for Thomas Nelson and Nelson County Athletics work as presented?
Motion.
And I guess to approve the FMD project BG1 as presented?
Motion.
All right, motion, Ms. Berry. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, none opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, and then New Haven facility timeline, updating timeline?
So we want to take a moment to speak about progress on the New Haven facility conversation. So most recently, it was asked from, from the board to really kind of think about and evaluate capacity and work collaboratively with KDE to help and support us in that process. These are really the steps that we have taken. We did reach out to Gary Leest, KDE representative that specializes in this area. At that point in time, he recommended that we update our K-FIX, which Mr. Manningly can talk to you about what that means. So we've submitted that K-FIX to their team. They're currently evaluating that. Mr. Manningly's going to tell you what it is. We've updated that. They're reviewing it. After they have a chance to review that, they'll then work to support us as we think about evaluating capacity and use of space. So here's really what that document is.
So the K-FIX stands for Kentucky Facilities Inventory and Classification Systems.
Thank you.
About 2018, they made every district in KDE work with Amaresco to update every school we have, every piece of equipment, every floor. Mr. Ward can account for it, because he did all our work back in 2019 and got us finished. Anything we've done since then, we have to update. New Haven's got a couple floors that we changed and paving that we did striping. I've done all that and sent it to him, waiting for his answer back on those questions and answers. That's what we're saying.
Okay. Do we have any idea like how long it will take to get that info back? Are we just kind of at their mercy? Sure.
Well, I mean, we'll have something back within the next two weeks.
Okay.
So we really don't need concrete answers in on that, so we're just waiting to hear something.
It's really, when you think about collaboration with KDE, those are the steps that they've asked us to take. So upon completion of that, they'll then be able to help support us really with the next step.
They're going to tell us probably the same thing we've already got, which is this number right here.
Right. So we just wanted to provide, I know a lot of the, the artistic drawings are kind of difficult to see. This is just a simplistic view of the current New Haven facility. Ms. Berry asked about enrollment earlier. Currently, inside this space, we're looking at 180 students or so when you count the pre-K. Our current DFP that we have that listed as a P5 indicates the facility has a capacity of 484 students. Obviously, our preschool students just started on Monday. School is, this is our fifth day in session, and obviously, this is a different facility than it was a year ago, so I think Ms. Clark and the New Haven team continue to think about how they're utilizing that space and what makes the most sense for them as they look at long-term sustainability of the school and, and the students that they have is really our next steps.
I think, to be fair, you know, there's, this, this implies there's 300 empty seats at New Haven. There's not, when you walk into that building, it does not feel like you've got 300 empty seats. But that's the way KDE calculates capacity. So, you know, just as a reminder, some of those rooms are being used for different things. Currently, in fact, I think every single one of the rooms are being used for a care and connect class or family resource or something of that nature. I'm not aware of any of the rooms that are being used for something targeted. They're just not being used all day. Just some context on that.
Thank you all.
Good job, thank you.
Okay, board calendar, and there's been a change. Is this?
So recommended change based on the tax billing process. The sheriff's office makes it easier on them if we give them a little more time, and their recommendation would be to consider September, moving September 17th to September the 10th. This may mean there may be one or two things that don't make the agenda, that didn't get approved on the financial report, that would have to move to October, but in general, it would allow us to act faster to support the sheriff's office.
Okay. Do we have a motion to move that September meeting to the 10th?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second. All in favor of moving this meeting, the September meeting, up to September the 10th? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Okay, and we have board celebrations. So as we unite students, we take time to celebrate the powerful, powerful examples we see across our Nelson County community. So would you be like to start celebrations?
I will.
Go for it.
So as probably not many people know, other than a few select staff members across the district, including the facility team, last Tuesday, Boston had part of their school flood from a busted pipe in a restroom. Now, first of all, I got to give kudos to whoever constructed the door on that restroom, because it held about four feet of water back before they opened the door. But about eight or nine of the staff that were still in the building got right to work, got that building ready for school the next day, and thank you for the facility team. I believe Foster Heights even had an issue the same day, so it was a bit of a disaster, but I have to, I have to give kudos to the staff at Boston. They celebrated that moment as an opportunity to team build, and while they weren't celebrating the instantaneous heartbreak that they felt at the moment, it was how they worked together as a team. And the next day, I went in and they were just like in smiles and joy of how they worked together and how their team came together, and it was a really exciting moment, but, and they also, I think, need to shout out for some Amazon stickers that were on the floor that are still there. So they did an awesome job getting that school ready with the amount of water that was in that building, and there's a video somewhere, I believe. They did a great job, and they are feeling a really good moment of their team and how they're growing, and it was a wonderful thing. And I also want to celebrate all of the teachers that they got together and all the staff across the district that got together this summer and collaborated and worked together, because as Mr. Hoye said, I think there is definitely an energy building in Nelson County schools, and I know I feel it every time I walk in a building. You guys are on point, you're ready to move forward, and it is eyes off, everyone's eyes are moving ahead, and I am so grateful for you guys taking time out of your summer to, to collaborate for students.
Well, I appreciate, there were a lot of changes to start this school year, and we all know, and, and some of them were, were hard, you know, hard changes, a lot, a lot of them were, but I appreciate the teachers and the positivity that they've, you know, in the face of a challenge, that they just met it head-on and, and they were positive for students, and I know the results of that is going to come through, so I appreciate that. That, that takes, that's hard, and I, it doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you for that.
We're, we're going to go back to Boston for a moment. I congratulated them. I went in one day to congratulate her on the new dressing rooms for the athletics, for the girls. She was good enough, or the, the community, Boston community, celebrated to, for those, for that dressing room, and made donations, so it didn't come out of anybody's, any school pocket. So I congratulate Boston School for that. Also, I congratulate the county as a whole for bringing our arts department, any form of arts, because you don't know what you've got until you, you don't know what you're missing until you have it, and it's gone, the arts. And I appreciate the teachers and the collaboration between the teachers and other elements that have taken the forward leap to have the collaboration. I appreciate it very much, so thank you on that. Anything, David?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn the regular session of the Board of Education?
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?